Today's meeting to order. Roll call please.
Brayden, here. Hargett.
Here.
Marbella.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Whitmore.
Here.
White.
Here.
Mayor Bruno.
Here. Please stand for tonight's invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Pastor Carlson with Grace Church. Can we have it here, Bob?
At my place, you don't start till I get there either, so.
That's great.
It's good of the mayor to hold things up for somebody as important as me.
Thank you, Father God, for the great time we can have together as people living in community. Thank you, Lord, for that wonderful word. Thank you for your creation of man and for your giving of life and everlasting life, both of which we need and neither of which we get anywhere else. So, thank you for that. May we feel blessed because we are, may we be humble because we need to be, may we be excited because of the things you have in store for us. And I thank you, Father God, for this fine community, for our village, and thank you, Father, for these who serve a lot of appointments going to be tonight, it looks like. I pray for each of them. But, Father, I pray that each of us could recognize the part we have in making this continue to be a great place to live and work and raise our family and make a difference. And I pray, Father, for blessings and safety and great things to come as we come into Thanksgiving, Christmas, and end this year and begin a new one faithfully for you. And I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four regular board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call, please.
Brayden, aye. Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to mayor's report. I need a motion to adopt resolution appointing Matthew Lyons to a full-time police officer. So moved. Second. Any discussion on that? Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Pardon.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. Matthew Lyons, come forward, please. I'm gonna do your votes of office. Did you raise your hand and repeat after me? Aye. I state your name. Matthew Lyons. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear that I will support. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully discharge the duty. Discharge the duty. Of a police officer. Of a police officer to the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. All right, we move on to second item. I need a motion to adopt resolution appointing Margot Nelson to Economic Development Chair. So moved.
Okay.
Any discussion?
I'll just say for this one and for all the following ones.
Yes.
A little explanation with that. The EDC appointments have last, so they're on here just to make sure that they're, so they're staggered, and in the future, they won't be all at once. So we just wanted to make sure that everything was clear with the bylaws and codes.
All right. Sanjay pointed that out to me several weeks ago, so thank you, Trustee McCarthy. Okay, roll call, please.
Brayden, aye. Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. I need to, I need a motion to adopt resolution appointing, a resolution appointing Fred Teeman to Economic Development Vice Chair. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Brayden, aye. Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. Need a motion to adopt resolution appointing Robert Long to Economic Development Member at Large. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Brayden, aye. Hargett. Aye. Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. Need a motion to approve resolution appointing Alex Deli Palalo to Economic Development Member. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Brayden, aye. Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. I need a motion to adopt resolution appointing Beth McGinnis to Economic Development Member. So moved.
Aye.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. I need a motion to approve resolution appointing Lynne Slinger to Economic Development Secretary. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay, roll call.
Brayden, aye. Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. Move on to the next item. Proclamation for National American Heritage Month. National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, American Indians Committee, National American Heritage, Indian Heritage Month, whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous people. And whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. And whereas our customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in nineteen seventy-six and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August of nineteen ninety, designated in the month of November as National American Heritage, Indian Heritage Month. And whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore, I, Dr. Michael Bruno, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Winter Harbor, do hereby proclaim November as the National American Indian Heritage Month in Winter Harbor and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And witness to here, where I have unto set my hand and cause the seal of Winter Harbor to be affixed this nineteenth day of November, the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-four. I would like to call up to the podium Virginia Lopez. She has a very impressive gift for the village of Winter Harbor.
Could you come forward, Mayor?
I will.
So, the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, the accompanying flag of the United States of America was proudly flown at D A R headquarters in Washington, D.C. in honor of the Village of Winter Harbor Little Fort NS D A R Centennial in honor of Flag Day on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We would like to thank the village for its service to its community. Thank you to all the employees, and we appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Got it?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, couple of mayor comments. We are committed to working together to support our local businesses. As an example, we are currently collaborating with North Point Marina and Skipper Buds to advocate for the need for dredging with both state and federal permitting agencies. The proper operations of these two businesses are vital to our local economy. Tonight, we will be considering the expansion of existing businesses that offer additional food options in the heart of our community. We are excited about the potential for new business growth and encourage everyone to eat and shop locally. This evening marks the first steps towards updating and investing in our aging water system, which is in need of repairs and improvements. Our actions will help ensure a functional and reliable water system for our residents for years to come. I am looking forward to Santa Day on December seventh. This event is a wonderful opportunity to preserve some of our cherished traditions such as breakfast with Santa, the Christmas parade, and the tree lighting ceremony. In two thousand and twenty-two, the police and fire departments began escorting Santa to the village to collect toys for our local toys for our tots. Santa Day will continue to create lasting memories for our families. We hope to see you all at these events, and I would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. So, that's all I have. Would you like to move on to village administrative report? I have no reports, I think. Thank you, Dick. Move on to clerks correspondent?
We don't have it.
Move on to new business committee reports, administration, community development committees. Trustee McCarthy.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrants, twenty twenty-four dash seven, in the amount of four hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-three cents.
Second.
Second, any discussion on the warrant? Roll call, please.
Brayden, aye. Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution granting a revocable license to Robert Greeney, allowing conditional use of village-owned property at sixteen thirty-two Levine Drive.
Discussion on that, I.
Is this something to help out elderly gentlemen?
Yes, it is.
With the note that if we need to remove it to have access to that, it's a sloped driveway and I hope we can get down to this point.
Something. Thank you, Father. Thank you. Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
On this one, since it's a relief from the code, is this part an ordinance?
This is for the cafe?
Uh, no, this is the fence line. Thought it was a source since it's really from the code.
Oh, yeah. Oh, you can waive that.
Just making sure. A motion to approve a request for relief from municipal code section one five five point zero five, permitted fences specific to six oh one Whitney Avenue only.
Okay.
Motion to approve it.
Okay.
And this one, I can tell I was a previous neighbor here, and this was, this fence was there forever, but it was knocked down by storm. There's never any issues with it before, so just asking to be, replace the fence there. That was there.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brayden, aye. Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And this one would be an ordinance, so I'll make a motion to waive the rules of the president or trustees and the first and second readings and adopt as presented the request for ad and application for a business and liquor license for Wild Rose Beach Cafe and Banquet Hall.
Second. All right, any discussion on that? I mean, you're one of the owners here.
That's not anybody.
I would like to know how you came up, if you could come up and, I'd like to know how you came up with Wild Rose.
The residents.
Well, we came up with a few different names. It was gonna be Rosebud, Beach Cafe, and then it was, my father named me Amber Rose or Rosebud, it was my nickname. And something we were trying to, it was a little too overused, so we wanted to come up with something more unique. Then when we were walking on the prairie down here, Wild Roses were everywhere, so that's.
The Wild Cafe.
And the Illinois beach area.
Totally gorgeous down here.
We want to keep it in the safe as our prairie as the Wild.
Nice rustic look to the, to the logo that we're doing with the Wild Roses, so.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's short and simple, it has my middle name in it. I was, in, little Wild Rose.
I was told it was your middle name, but you are a wild person.
She is a Wild Rose. Gotta be trying to do what we're doing. But it really is for the roses down on the beach area. Yeah, I know. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Because I appreciate you contributing to the restaurant and the community.
Thank you very much. Very hard work. Very hard. Coming up with a lot of great ideas to keep the restaurant in going and the bakery going and a lot of new menu ideas and a lot of excitement going on in the restaurant. We're ready for a new challenge.
So we breakfast lunch.
Breakfast lunch is there to be from seven in the morning till eight o'clock at night. And maybe, yeah. We're bringing two.
Maybe tonight, another, then another nice rest, family restaurant to go each. Bring it back to life.
I mean, I love Stone Creek, but we.
But we want to add on.
Let me keep people here in Winter Harbor instead of going across the state line and going to Home Run and other places. I would generally like that too, but keep them here. This thing is gonna work really well.
Right.
So, we've done so good so far, so I mean, we could go further.
I read your letter of intent.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What do you think of the?
Well, we, we just got the finances ready for the plumbing, and we had to get half done on that, so that's gonna be going in tomorrow. And then after that, everything should be rolling, which is, well, we're hoping by the beginning of January and February at the latest. There's a long, lot of work to do over there.
So, yeah. Hopefully, in a few, few months, we could be open running. Got all, it's got all the equipment ready. Just got the flooring coming in too, and everything is a very positive, very.
Everybody's on board to get going, get it going.
Yeah.
So, we got a lot of help and a lot of.
Yep.
A lot of nice guys coming and helping us, so.
Yeah.
It's very proud of them all around. Just trying to give everybody something really nice to go to.
So your restaurant's gotta go from small to fairly large.
Yeah, well, when we started, we were just in a small little area, and now we expanded into the other, I'm, I'm out of room, so now we're going into another business. Isn't that great? I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah. Yeah.
I love the.
More opportunity in a bigger place than a real restaurant, too. So what we've, you know, done in a small little shoebox bakery slash restaurant, we're given this opportunity, we can really make things go bigger.
And I have to mention that even before that, while Cindy was testing out her recipes, I was lucky enough to be a neighbor and get.
Yes, I think all the neighbors got a little bit of a servant. They were acting up already, but yes.
Yeah. So it started, I mean, even before the little tiny.
Well, I said, I had my kind of school license for a long time. Couldn't myself run it by my.
Even before that, I was rolling cookies, you know, just big, and I, I, when I hear people complain, oh my God, I don't wanna do raspberries, oh, great, good. Well, I've made thousands in my lifetime, so you can keep going, keep going.
So I, we're continuing to make them, so. Started with the family.
Yep.
Looking forward to opening ribbon cabinet.
Yeah. Yeah, a little excited.
Yes.
I think, you know, it should be said so that's clear, you know, for future applicants that we don't give out, you know, liquor licenses that easily, you know, especially with the gaming, so that other applicants, when they come before us, you know, it doesn't look like we, we hand those out, you know, that they're criteria, you know, that we wanna know that, you know, the intent is to truly have a restaurant, truly have a business, but that in this situation, they're already coming in with proof of concept, existing business, the intent's truly of a restaurant. So, they're already coming in with this because we have had other applications come in where we have no idea, you know, what the real intent. Is it to, you know, really serve food? Is it to really have a restaurant? You know, is that the real intent? And, and, you know, we, we've been very anxious with that, you know, and do that. So I don't want anyone to get the idea that we're ready to just hand out, you know, that to anyone. This is a different situation because we have an existing business.
Appreciate that.
That's been here for years, growing that and proving that their intent is to grow and build, you know, the existing business and build on that. So I just want to make sure that.
Thank you for that.
That's clear, and that, you know, when other people come in, that they're not gonna come in and say, well, you gave it to this business, right, it's that. It's like, no, they, they met criteria that.
We're.
That we gave clear is what we would want to see.
We're.
BYOB too, and there's been no issues over there, so they.
Yeah, that's, that's wonderful.
Yes.
Yeah, so again, yeah, they've proven, yeah, that they.
We're not.
Just. I think it's important, though, is that I can only really speak to myself, but I think it's important, though, is on that thing, note that Justin McCarthy was talking about, is that there's food service that's more than just the gaming, and that's what we're looking for.
We all need a, I know, we're really excited about it, but I think we're more interested in getting the food and.
Yep.
And the room to serve more people at once and get to show everybody what we can do in a, in a better space.
We appreciate what you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion, nothing but success.
Thank you very much.
Essentially, the way our liquor code works, we have to, the motion needs to say that to amend the code to add an additional Class G license for this.
Okay.
Can we amend the motion in the second for that purpose?
So, I'd like to make a motion to grant a Class G.
Create Class.
To create a Class G license for Wild Rose Beach Cafe and Banquet Hall.
And to increase the number of.
And to increase the number of Class G licenses.
One.
By one, under the Village of Winter Harbor Code, waiving the first and second readings. Did I cover everything?
Yep.
Um, then.
Yes, I can. All right. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Trustee McCarthy. All right, roll call.
Brayden, aye. Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to approve an ordinance waiving the first and second readings and adopt as presented, amending parts of chapter one sixteen of the Winter Harbor Musical Code pertaining to food trucks.
Second, any discussion?
So this would be making permanent what was adopted as pilot program a couple of years ago. The food trucks basically just applies to food trucks on festival grounds, which is at the, the arena. Food trucks anywhere else in the village basically fall under special event permits. And then it also includes some new language as far as, I believe, fees and the enforcement of, of the, of the village code.
Which Debbie and Sanjay are responsible for.
We had extensive conversation in developing the pilot, and I think it's been well received, and there have been quite a few that have taken advantage of it, particularly on that festival aspect of it. So, yeah, I think it's working well, it makes sense to adopt it.
And they're still available for other places, that's.
Right.
Compounds especially for a special event permits, anyway.
Any other comments? All right. Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Trustee McCarthy. Move on to a part for safety. Trustee.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve with, we never walk alone, three-year peer support network, cost of two dollars and fifty cents for officer monthly, also one thousand dollars for training of two peer-supported officers, total cost not to exceed three thousand dollars.
Second.
Second. All right, any discussion?
Could I just, just a little bit more about?
Yeah, I wanna know a little bit more about it, too. I read the paperwork.
What it basically is, it's a network of, I believe there's over eighty departments now, that each contribute a peer-support officer based on the number of sworn officers. And that creates a network that anybody that joins can have access to. So since we don't have any peer-support officers certified here, we would be able to call up any one of the peer-support officers if an officer needed guidance or anything like that, just to talk about things. Once we do get two certified, we'll put them into the pool that other people can draw onto. One of the issues with a small department like this is a lot of people don't go to their peers or address any problems. Because of rumors, they're embarrassed, they're the guys they gotta work with, this gives them an outlet that they can talk to somebody they might not ever meet again and get some advice on, on any issues they're having or anything like that.
Does your union have any support also, they should, within the union, too? Just as a compliment to that.
No, in the contract, there is nothing. And that's kinda lacking, the whole peer-support network, a lot of the mental health issues are lacking in a lot of departments today. So there is more of a push to get officers, different types of counseling or anything like that, that they can use before the issues become bigger.
And also currently, we do, we do enroll in an employee assistance program, and that's open to all employees, a hundred percent. I think this is geared a little bit more towards law enforcement.
This is strictly law enforcement, yes.
I appreciate you bringing it forward. So I think even as a small department, there are burdens that you all carry, and they're eating into your role, and it's not glad we're able to bring something like this as a support forum.
I agree.
First time I've heard about this, you know, never seen this before. Other departments have this.
Um, yeah, like I said, there's over 80 departments now that are involved in this. And that number's going to keep growing, I think. So we'll have, you know, an officer to call anybody up anytime, the day or night, and talk to somebody.
So are the peer support officers counselors or the?
They've gone through a course. They're not certified counselors. If there is an issue with, things might be taking a turn for the worse. What they'll do is they'll contact the officer's home jurisdiction and have the officers there do well-being check on them. They won't notify the department of who is using their services, so it's confidential. I won't know if somebody calls up and uses their services. And that's part of the, I guess, availability of it, to get people to use it more. It is when they call and ask to talk to somebody, it doesn't get reported back to me.
So you had mentioned that, because we don't have any trained, but what's our small.
Yeah, we'll.
Fortunately, they more respect, I mean, full confidentiality, not to have the wrong people doing that.
Well, our own people can. Our own people don't have to do it. Our own people would be put in the network where other departments could call on them, not necessarily officers here would. They would have that option if they wanted to, but if they didn't want to confide in somebody they work with every day, they can go outside and there's plenty of other peer support officers for them.
That's right. Thank you.
I'm assuming, Chief, that if there needs to be more professional help, then they can forward that.
They do offer other services that would be covered by the insurance as far as professional counselors.
I would like to see something like this happen in more departments because like even with the paramedics, when they get into a situation where there's a life situation that one passes on, especially like a child or an infant, that can adversely affect the paramedic alone. And.
We are involved at the fire department with a network of those services. The fire service pioneered this. And we have taken advantage of it here already.
We just made it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Brokaw.
Brayden, hi. Hargett.
Aye.
Mayor Bella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore. Aye. White.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve service agreement for grant riding with Grantmasters with a financial impact of $3,300.
Motion second. Any discussion on that? Brokaw, please.
Brayden, hi. Hargett.
Aye.
Mayor Bella.
Aye.
McCarthy. Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve ordinance declaring the 2,000 Polaris ATV authorized surplus forbid.
Headway.
Second.
He's going to wave the first.
Yeah, he waves the first.
Way of the.
Okay. He's going to wave his first second reading.
Yeah.
Take a motion.
Let me get to it.
Let me.
At the bottom, very bottom one. At the bottom.
I think I move to set aside the rules of the President of the Board of Trustees to waive first, second readings of the ordinance to approve ordinance declaring the 2,000 Polaris ATV authorized surplus forbid.
Second.
Pardon? Uh, so we're retiring this or just hitting out for bid? We have another one. We got the new one. Right.
New track one.
That's right. We don't have room for this one and the old one. We don't have a need for the old one. The new one's a little safer or versatile, so we don't need to. Yep. Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Brayden, hi. Hargett.
Aye.
Mayor Bella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve service agreement with Procer.
Second. Discussion on that. Brokaw.
Brayden, hi. Hargett.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Uh, Mayor Bella.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, trustee Weiss. We move on to other courts and recreation, trustee Mayor Bella.
First thing I have is I moved the set aside. Rules are present, the board trustees to waive the first and second reading. For the ordinance, revising ordinance allowing high-demption polyethylene water service lines as presented.
Second.
Basically, other communities do this. Tim could speak to this if he would like to, but he doesn't have to. But we're just coming with the times and this is acceptable, you know, and as statements. We're just moving up with the times because other people have asked for it, the rebuilders.
Thank you, trustee. Any other comments? Brokaw, please.
Brayden, hi. Hargett.
Aye.
Mayor Bella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore. Aye. White.
Motion carries.
So the second one I got, I believe we read last time, so did we not?
We did the first, we're not the second.
So that's, but this says to waive the first and second, so.
Yeah, we did the way of the second.
So I'm just clarifying so that we're doing this right.
Yes, thank you.
So I moved to adopt, moved to adopt the ordinance revising water and sewer rates, waiving the second reading.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? Brokaw.
Brayden, hi. Hargett.
Aye.
Mayor Bella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore. White.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Third thing is a motion to approve the service agreement renewal with IT.
I need a second.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Just to read the rule. Brokaw.
Brayden, hi. Hargett.
Aye.
Mayor Bella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore. Aye. White.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The fourth item is a motion to approve the shared road sewers and water main extension from Master Woodland Plaza, an impact of $83,400. Will be funded through the American Rescue Plan Act. Our.
Sorry, Colonel.
That's right.
We got a second. Any discussion on that?
Attorney, would we have to waive the bidding process?
Not. It's not a real professional services.
But that should be clarified that this is just for the design.
Yes.
That's correct.
Engineer.
This, the way it read, it sounded like it only costs $83,000.
We should be so lucky.
A whole million.
So I just want to make sure that was, that was clear.
Trustee engineering. I think the sums were a lot more than that.
So the.
This is the design.
How I married, yes.
We were, we did ask for involved part figured in today's numbers, which we did add in there as a $1.2 million project. The reason why we're requesting this to be done is because in the future, water conservation is going to be a hot topic, especially in the federal government. There's going to be, we think that there's going to be a lot of opportunities for funding and the first priority in the funding goes with several end projects. With having the engineering done, we're also going to have to secure a few easements. We're going to be, we're going to be ready to apply for some of these grants. And again, that intersection with it being finalized, with the amount of work that's going there, we're hoping that it's going to increase traffic, it's going to respark interest in that intersection, which the village owns part of that intersection. So I think we'll be ready to make some investment in that area. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Tim.
Brokaw.
Brayden, hi. Hargett.
Aye.
Mayor Bella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The final item is Robert McCory bike path enhancement presentation.
We won't take up too much of your time tonight, but we did want to.
Get rid of the trellis.
I am.
I know.
I remembered today that the pointer doesn't work.
He likes to talk it, I know.
So honestly, we just want to give you a quick update of what's going on in the Lake County Department of Transportation and the bike path improvements that they have going on. First thing, this has gone on for a little while. They, there are phases. They typically will work in four different phases, being planning, design, construction, complete. Right now, they're in the design phase from North Chicago all the way up to the state line. They're also doing some work in Highland Park area. They're going to pave the sections that aren't paved right now, all the way down to North Chicago. And then the biggest thing with, with working with Lake County is they designed these and they kind of essentially have them ready so when the funding is approved, like it's planned to start next spring, if all goes well and their funding falls into place, then they, they will start construction in the spring on that. And we'll go through a few of the things that they're going to do. Oops, run away. So basically.
Starting at the north end and working south.
They haven't said yet.
Yeah, they'll pick where to.
I think there's going to be a funding thing, which way they're going to go. Because there's actually more work to the south, like the Highland Park Hydrate area. There's a lot of concrete work down there. Whereas far north is Russell Road. It's a lot of drainage work, some culverts, repaving. So these are the plans that they've sent us. It starts along Russell Road there.
Guys, I can't even see that. It's small.
Yeah. Okay, so this is in Zion, so this is going south or going north. And then that's West Broadway. And East Broadway. So they're going to create, on the top picture there, they're going to create a new entranceway to the bike path off the dead end of West Broadway, just south of, or yeah, just south of 13th Street there. And then across the street from the shop, from the Public Works Building, they have that from Ninth Street to essentially our entrance, that orange area there. It's a gravel area of parking now. They're going to pave it and create 12 parking spots per, right at the entrance that leads to the bike path.
People use that a lot. So that pink areas, that's up to throughout 13th Street?
On the west side.
This part here, and as we go forward, we'll blow this up a little bit better, but this pink area here, all the pink is just drainage and grade.
Okay.
That's what they're working on, but that's going to be just south of 13th Street on West Broadway at the dead end.
They're going to have access to that.
They're going to create a new access there. They're going to upgrade the access across the street from Public Works. They did a little bit in the last few years. And they've been going along, they've increased signage, they've improved signage.
Seen that.
There's one house at the end of West Broadway there.
Yep, there's one house there.
They're going to spend there forever.
Yep.
Trees right there, but it's, there's a nice open area right there.
So this is Ninth Street and Fifth Street. So the top picture is Ninth Street. They're going to improve around the area of Ninth Street. And then this goes all the way up to Russell Road. Blowing these things up a little bit, so this is the map area. Picture on the left, where it's zooming in, that's what it looks like now. There's actually kind of a walking path through that area that people have created over the years. They come down 13th Street and they head through there. So they're going to make a new one there. And that's that one that we were just talking about.
Yep.
It'll probably be a gravel path. It's not designed to be paved, but they're going to put a culvert in, do some drainage and grading. And all along the bike path, they're, they're improving the drainage and grading there.
There's a big ditch there now at.
Yeah.
That location.
Yep.
And it's, it's treacherous, right?
And all that stormwater, it just continues to work itself east. So this is the Public Works Building, right across the street, they're going to create it. And then after, going north, after the 12 parking spots, they're going to create some native grass there and remove the gravel parking lot. That's what it's going to kind of look like with the new entrance to the bike path. And then Fifth Street, they're going to improve that section there right at the dead end.
No bike riding over there.
Yeah. And then Ninth Street, those are the areas that they're going to do some new culvert work as well. And then all the way up to Russell Road, it has the path that comes down. They just did a few years ago when they improved the bridge.
Right.
Right at the entrance off of the bike path, they're going to make some improvements there.
Okay.
So like I said, really quick, just wanted to give you some updates on what their plans are and what they're planning to do. This has nothing to do with us. It's completely funded by Lake County. But we want to at least keep you informed of what their process is and what they're doing.
When are they supposed to start?
Supposed to be in the spring of '25, so next spring. Kind of goes along the lines, Lewis Avenue and Russell Road and Kenosha Road, Kenosha Road and Russell Road. Those are supposed to start next spring as well. So it could be working. It all depends on what they choose to fund next year. They have multimillion dollar projects that they just kind of line up. And it's scheduled to go, and they typically keep on schedule, but sometimes like the two roundabouts on Russell Road, you know, they got delayed. So they're, they're still in the design phase. And funding phase.
And during our initial, this was about a year and a half ago, during our initial meeting, they basically asked what our wish list was. We had to put it fairly quickly. And part of our wish list was a connection along the Fifth Street right away. Am I correct? The Fifth Street right away to make that into a path connecting, connecting Village Park and eventually connecting to Seventh Street.
Skip our attorney on it.
So, but unfortunately, this is what they came up with for our wish.
I'm just.
Well, I, like, we can approve amenities in town and not have to pay for them.
Right.
That is, that is very good. And David, I think for our social media, there's a lot of history with this trail that I think we can promote as this project is going on. There's a little picture.
Absolutely, absolutely. And honestly, you know, we go back to Fifth Street, the right of way going east, you know, we've talked about that for years and it ends at Roberts Road there. We wanted that and then to create bike friendly lanes that lead all the way to the Marina. You know, we've had this conversation for years and it's something that's still on our checklist and we'll hopefully get to it when the funding gets to us. And, you know, we create those things to increase the amenities that we have. Any other questions?
I just had a quick one.
Yeah.
Because I know something that comes up a lot. Have they said anything about any changes or anything for like rider safety? Like physical safety, like from other people?
I haven't heard anything, but I know that's part of the reason why. Are you talking about like security safety? Or like safety of the path?
No, like security, like from being secure from attacks.
Oh, attacks. I see what you're saying. No, I, they wouldn't tell me that anyway. They would tell them that.
Are you calling for drones? You just want like permanent drone?
But I mean, you know what I mean, though.
I thought you were talking about like chasing. I know that was part of the reason why they're paving the grass.
I don't know just anything I know because that's something I always complain about. So I didn't know if they were looking into any ways to make it, either make safer, make people feel safer on it.
Sure.
For access. But that affects, you know, usage. It affects usage if people feel safe.
For sure.
You know, because it doesn't take much for someone to go online and people.
Well, there's some long stretches on there that are, you know, pretty quiet.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want my kids, you know, I would worry about my kids going on, you know, whether it's, whether it's real or perception.
And we all know perception sometimes isn't reality. But I know a bike path like us, there's people parking there constantly, all day and riding.
Yeah, and in the morning.
Some of the guys I talk to, you know, they do ride all the way to Highland Park and then make it back.
So it's a true.
Their cars.
And it might be a totally separate group, separate discussions.
Correct, absolutely. Anything else?
But that gravel parking area over by you, that's going to be gone.
It's paved.
Correct. It's going to pave into 12 parking spaces.
Okay.
And then.
Because I know the park uses that too.
Pardon?
The park over there. Do you have any default?
Correct. They're going to lose some parking for that ball field, but I mean, I got to tell you, they, not as much as it used.
Not as much use?
No. So, but yes, they would lose that.
Okay.
And then we can, we kind of figure it out, see if we have to do a system anywhere.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Sure.
And the only other thing I have, Scott wants to do a presentation about trees. But then pushing them to get ready for the, and it came about, so he did his due diligence.
Yeah, so I placed down a memo on the mailbox here earlier today. David had reached out last month in regards to Lake County tree planting program. That's something I believe is fairly new. Was able to get an application submitted last month, received news last week that we were approved for receiving trees for next spring of 2025. So as trustee Hargett mentioned, it's always great to have amenities and things added that free, you know, free the cost to the village. So we are approved to receive 30 brand new tree plantings in the spring of 2025. Lake County and their subcontractors, they will be responsible for the prep work, stump removal, the actual tree planting itself. So that will all be done without the need of staff to do that. So we're very excited. And the timing is great too, as it falls in line with our, throughout 2024, Recreation Advisory Board, the Economic Development Committee. We've had numerous meetings in regards to vision planning for Village Park, vision planning for Village Park, in regards to the State of Illinois DCBO grant that we're receiving for, for 2025, placement of playground equipments, amenities, one of those is shade areas, which, the location of these trees, there's a map provided, proposed areas, have a meeting later this week to go with Lake County representative on tree locations, discuss species of trees that would fit these different areas. But some of these trees that are proposed to be planted will fall in line with the plans that were discussed with our village committees this year relating to necessities and amenities for these playground areas.
Probably all shady trees, I reckon like cherry and apple.
That, I'm, I'm not sure, I don't believe so, and, and I know, you know, Tim has experience with this, too, with tree grants that we've received in previous years and plantings, there's kind of a list of approved planting, you know, specimens of trees that we've had, so we'll be discussing that as well with Lake County and make sure everything falls in line, but, but yeah, I would assume, I don't know, a variety, but, you know, we have, we have so many ash trees in the park and throughout the village, and as we all know, you know, in recent years, that Emerald Ash Ford disease has wiped out a large number of trees, so a variety is important, but, you know, there's a, a kind of a specific or restricted list, I believe, that, you know, pertains to what areas, what areas. Areas of the park that are targeted are mainly, you know, outer perimeter, a lot of walk paths, parking lots, playground equipments, and also areas that hold water. So, you know, we hope to mitigate some of the flooding issues that we've had in areas of the park with the use of some of these trees, trees that will be planted. So just wanted to share that.
Thanks, Scott.
I want to say, too, Scott.
Yes.
This glance, also take up the stump planting, so contract, so it's.
It's hands-on, we're in the.
Could be really hands-off, which is fabulous.
Yes.
We're not planning on this time.
Which is good, considering I think all of the trees I planted last time were all dead, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, that was four or five years ago, and planning conditions were hushed and ideal, you know, we had a marmalade in the days leading up.
October 2019.
Yeah, a very, very muddy mess, and some, some of those trees did not survive, so I'm in the proposal here, these new plantings would replace some of those that survived.
We are not going to put them in between the drive and the baseball diamonds, are we?
No.
Okay, guys, so you know we put a couple there last time, which, again, luckily I planted them, so they're no longer there, just because we use that for parking all the time, I thought that wasn't.
Oh, okay, yeah, right, just kind of west of that, west parking lot, there's a.
Yeah, I hate to see trees going in there when we're using that for parking.
Sure, sure. Yeah, and we will, we will have that in mind, there's those designated gravel roadways that we use to get into the field, so I do have a couple of trees proposed closer to along 9th Street on that drive. But yeah, there's some, some areas where we have trees that we've lost in previous years, just throughout the park, you know, the sidewalk on the north end, the, the drive, where the, there's a couple of vanded in between the soccer fields, where we have a giant opening space, where we have swills that separate the soccer fields, that we're going to add some trees there, again, to help mitigate some of the, the water that pools and provide a little shade for family center, utilizing them for sports.
Now, the blue ones, the 18 blue ones, those are the objective where the new ones are going to go?
Yeah, there, there's no previous trees, there's something that needs to happen, the dead trees in place.
Or approved for 30, up to 30 trees.
30 trees, yes.
Now, where the red ones are coming out, the dead ones, they're going to plant new ones in those, in those locations.
That, that's what we'll be going over, but that's the proposed, yes, that there's a few trees that are, a couple of stumps, trees have already been taken down by Public Works.
Right.
So we need some stumping to occur, and then mostly, there's trees that were planted previous, going back even 20 years ago, that just are ash, a couple of ash trees are left, more trees from 2019 that haven't made it, so they will remove the trees, get the stumps out of the ground and plant those.
Yeah, when we talked today, unbelievable, just they're going to remove the old trees.
Yes.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me move on to public comments, if anybody would like to address the board, we just asked, provide us your name and your address. Start with, so we go on to unfinished business, I'll start down on my right, I'll go Trustee Marbella.
So we just have a couple items. Wanted to put it out, there's, they changed the route for the school, so my neighbors are getting a little upset, the retired ones, that they're coming down the road pretty fast, and late for school, so they've changed that, so we just need to watch out for these kids. As it gets, we are a walking community, a driving community, as it gets to winter time, as we know the sidewalks don't go all the way there, so everybody coming from south and headed that way are going to be in the road.
You mentioned 10th Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a phone call.
Oh, okay, I know you did, because I, I had a conversation with you.
Yes.
No, no, try to resolve it, sorry. We need to, we need to look for that, so we've had a good tree pickup, I believe, much accomplished with that, so kudos to the guys on that. Our plow season's coming up, I'm not going to say the four leather words that we've got to learn to say, so, but we are ready, the salt in the barn, our guys are ready, we're getting our trucks ready, we've got a couple bumps in the road that we're going to take care of, we got our mechanic out there, so things are good, so. Especially we watch for the kids, especially coming across, they still walk across 9th Street, they don't use the road, it's just because there's so many accesses with the bike path, and kids are kids, so as adults, we got to look out for our childrens. Other than that, that's all we got.
Thank you, Trustee, call it, Trustee Hargett.
We did have a public safety committee meeting, since the last meeting, continued the discussion on some of the traffic calming. Some of it is also communicating to the public, so we talked about ways to leverage social media, the newsletter, those sorts of things, to make sure that people are aware of what options we may have to be able to monitor and assist when it comes to traffic calming, so just as a follow-up from the last meeting, that, that conversation has continued, and there are at least more communications for the public coming.
Thank you, Trustee Hargett, and Trustee Weiss.
Everything he said, I agree with.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Weiss, Trustee McCrady.
Okay. Just wanted to thank Community 365 for holding the Mayor's Luncheon, it was a good event to hear all the communities and see everyone together, so just thanks to all the volunteers and people who put that together. Thanks to Scott and the Recreation Department, and Trustee Marbella and Whitmore, and everybody on Freak Show and Tell, so that was good, cool event. And looking forward to more shows and opportunities, things like that, the wrestling, Freak Show and Tell just shows, the use and opportunities we have with that building.
Right.
You know, I was just reading, you know, something about, you know, we can only imagine what we've experienced, you know, and, and now we're experiencing, you know, opportunities with that building that, you know, we didn't realize, so now hopefully we'll, we'll start to kind of imagine other opportunities there that we didn't even think about before. Hopefully that makes sense.
It was good.
And Scott, congrats on the, the grants, and thank you for doing that, that's awesome, I'm excited about that. EDC, we've been working on, continuing to work on recommendations, modernizing parts of the code, we just finished up with recommendations for the sign code that we passed on to Planning and Zoning Board, and specifically some recommendations for amendment for the electronic messaging board, boards, part of the sign code that we passed on to Planning and Zoning, that we hope will move on, and hopefully we'll see something at the Village Board within a couple of meetings, if I'm not mistaken, was the plan. And we're also going to be looking at some ways to incentivize businesses in other ways in the downtown area to try and help entrepreneurs, new businesses, in any way that we can to bring them in and to thrive and continue and plant the seeds for success. And the last thing is just congratulate, they left already, but congratulate Wild Rose Cafe, and I'm excited for their expansion as well. And that was all that.
All right, thank you, Trustee McCrady, Trustee Brayden. I'm happy to get you.
Made me laugh a little. First, I want to say thank you to the Safety Committee for staying on top of that, it's an important issue to the residents, and I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that you're still working on it, and I'm sure that they will as well, so I just want to thank you for that. I'd like to give credit where it's due, and for the very first time, I have heard nothing but great things about the leaf pickup. And that is amazing to me, so I, I want to let everybody know that apparently the leaf pickup has gone extremely well, and I'm sure there's a few naysayers out there, but realistically, I've heard nothing but good things from here, so I want to say good job. And I want to congratulate Matthew Lyons, and welcome, and thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee McCrady, Trustee Alon.
Yeah, I want to congratulate Officer Lyons. I do want to just quickly go back to the Grant Masters Agreement. I apologize, I was just in the middle of saying something and we went into a roll call and I didn't want to interrupt, so I am working on getting a donation for us to pay for that for the year, just so it's not coming out of the budget, just because I think it's going to be really beneficial for us to have that moving forward, and it's going to be something that's going to really pay off in the long run. I really want to thank everyone who came out to Freak Show and Tell and to help during their time, it was a really good event, it was very interesting, a lot of history, comedy, science, so it was a little bit of everything. And then December 7th is Santa Day, 8:00 to 11:00 is Breakfast with Santa, then we have the first parade, then the light parade turning at 4:30, and then the tree lighting. A lot's going on that day, and then just don't forget, we are always looking for volunteers